First announcement, Commissioner Chapman is sick. So you have either the good fortune or the bad fortune, however you look at it, of me being chairman for the first time and I hope the last time. We'd like to start with a prayer from Reverend Ben Barton, Life Changes Church International. Ben's a really good guy, the only problem I have with him is he's a Georgia fan. So Ben, if you'd lead us in prayer and then we'll stand for the national, I mean for the pledge allegiance.
Honored to be here with you all today. Lord, we thank you for this day. We've come before you in the name of Jesus, asking you, Lord, for your wisdom, guidance, and direction for this meeting, for the upcoming events for our county and our nation. And now, Father God, we ask you, Lord, to anoint these commissioners right now with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding and direction on how to lead our county. We thank you for them, we call them blessed, and we ask you, Lord, right now to continue to watch over our county and make it great, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, do we have any elected officials here with us? I don't see any. Bobby Beasley, yeah, thanks for coming, Bobby. Supervisor of election, he's gonna be really busy in a couple of months. So also, I'd like to announce, Nathan, would you stand up? Nathan Curvin, a local boy from Defuniak Springs that I actually coached in Little League.
And I taught him in school.
So he has, he is our new HR director. We're glad to have him on board and knowing the kind of citizen Nathan is, I'm glad to have him back in Walden County. Thank you, Nathan. Now's the time to consider any addition or deletions. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had for your consideration an addition to repair the Glendale Community Center. That was gonna involve some, perhaps some rec plat fee funds from Commissioner Chapman. In his absence, we will not ask you to add that to the agenda, and that's all we had.
Uh, yes. Commissioner Anderson, I would ask that we delete item number 25 under my agenda items. Some questions have come up about the procurement process for this opioid litigation, and I need to research that before I bring it back to you. I should have it back to you soon, though.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve the agenda with additions, with deletions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we'll allow public comment for any item that's on the agenda. We're going to, it's a three-minute, this is for now, you can also speak when the agenda item comes up. We're gonna adhere strictly to the three minutes. When you see the yellow light come on, you've got 30 seconds, so start wrapping it up. When the buzzer goes off, I'm going to hit the gavel and you need to be finished by then. Seeing none?
Do you approve the consent agenda? Second.
So, call for a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Put it up.
Yes, sir.
Did I jump the gun there, Tom?
Uh, no. I'm just, my mind's two steps behind this morning. Okay, agenda item 11, approval of the Waste Management Expenditure Approval. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, Commissioner Jones, I mean, not Commissioner, Administrator Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item from admin for your request is to approve and authorize the chair to sign a memorandum of understanding with Waste Management regarding limited Sunday hours at the landfill. We've done this at least last year and perhaps a year before where we open on Sunday for a limited amount of time, Waste Management pays the bills for us to open so they can be sure their trucks are empty for their, beginning of their Monday routes. It works out real well for them and it's not an issue for us, so we would recommend your approval.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, anybody from the audience? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to approve and advertise an RFP for the county group health insurance. We do this on a regular basis, but it's time to do it this year on April 10th. We ask for your permission to draft an RFP and bring it back for your approval. That is in your package for the approval, and your vote to approve will allow us to take the enclosed document and advertise for submitted bids and proposals for our countywide health insurance, so we would recommend your approval.
What's the board's wishes?
Approve. Second.
Anything from the audience? The board have any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution recognizing May 20 through 26, 2018 as National Public Works Week. We've done this in previous years and it works out well, and it gives us opportunity to recognize those that work in our public works department. They will have some things planned for us to participate in during that time, but this resolution just designates that week as National Public Works Week.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Anything from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is a request to award and approve and authorize the chair to sign contract 018-016 for the Gulf Hill Estates paving project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, which was Utility Solutions Group, in the amount of $508,301.05. That's the base bid of 503,531530 plus alternates 2 and 3 and 4 for $4,985.75. This is a TIF project that has been moving forward and we're ready to move it into construction, so with your approval, we'll be able to move forward.
What's the board's wishes?
I move. Second.
Any discussion? Anything from the audience? My mind going blank. All in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. They put too much on me.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract 018-011 for auctioneering services with a top-ranked firm, Auctions International, for a term of two years with the option to renew for two additional year periods for one year each. This went through the bidding process, this firm came out the top ranked to provide these services. There was some discussion about whether these would be live or online, and it's a combination of both. All the, all, everything we sell, and these are our surplus materials, will be at the live site, they will be broadcasting certain of those products online, and you can bid online as well as live, so it'll be simultaneous. It won't be a separate auction for those online items as for the live items. We've checked these folks out, we believe they can provide the best service and the greatest return for those surplus items.
So our locals will be able to go to the fairgrounds or wherever we have it and bid as always, and then live as well?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to accept the resignation of Channing St. Albans from the at-large position on the Coastal Duke, Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board. With your acceptance of that resignation, we will begin the process of notifying the public that that position is available and receive applications for those that would wish to serve, and we will bring those back to you at a later date.
Motion to accept the resignation, second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all from administration, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toose?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This morning, we have a few agenda items. The first one is to request approval to schedule a TDC workshop for conceptual designs regarding the Seagrove Regional Beach Access. This is for the new property that we purchased last year. You may recall, we have had workshops for both the one in Miramar Beach that we purchased and then also the one in Dune Allen, so this is the third beach access property that we're developing. So we would like to schedule a meeting on May 16th at 5:00 PM at the Annex, so I'd just like approval to move forward with that.
Remove, second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. The next item is an update and request direction on the county welcome signs. Let's see. Thank you. All right, so I just wanted to show a couple of examples of what we currently have around the county. So this is down by the Annex, obviously. So this is the tan with the white lettering. This is just another example of that. Here's one for the sheriff's office, this is white background, obviously, with a dark green lettering, and then obviously, we have our dark brown signs that we currently have. So these are the options that we're looking at, there's four of them. So this is one option, just pretty clean, welcome to Walton County, established 1824. And if you want, I'll just run through these and then we can back up and talk about them each individually if you want to do it that way. This is similar tan background, and just FYI, this tan, it looks a little funny here on the screen, but that tan is actually the color that's, that we currently have, just FYI. So here's one, welcome Walton County, and then we have the established date, and Gateway to Paradise was one of the taglines that we came up with. The next one is white with black lettering, welcome to Walton County, and we have historic, we have the 1824 established date, and then we have the tagline where the Highlands meet the Gulf, and then we have just the dark brown, which we currently have, welcome to Walton County, established 1824, and then Gateway to Paradise. So obviously, a few things that we need to talk about as far as, you know, do we want a tagline, and if so, which tagline it is? Do we want historic, do we want established 1824? I will say, the more information we put on this sign, the smaller the information gets. You can kind of see, you know, here's one, just welcome to Walton County, and then we have established 1824. So when we have more room to work with, we can make things larger on the sign. Makes it a little bit more readable as people are driving by at a higher rate of speed on the highways, they can read this information. You know, then we have this one here, minus the historic, has the established date and a tagline. This one has the historic and the 1824 and a tagline. And then this one is minus the historic with a tagline and the established 1824 date. So that's kind of where we are. What I figure we'd do is discuss these, and I'll probably have to, I would think, bring back another option or two back to the board after the discussion today, but however y'all want to handle it is fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to start?
Sure.
And we'll work our way around. It says option A right here, I like the canned one with the black letters, I believe you can see black as you're going down a highway easier than you can white. And I'm traveling, you know, above the speed limit, trying to get to the beach before it drives up, so anything on there is not going to be able to be read. You know, I think established 1824 is sufficient. Just keep it, it's the KISS method for me, you know.
The majority of the people I've spoken with like option C. I know when I can say Mr. Teddy Stewart and Diane Pickett both approved it, that made me feel like I've accomplished something, the same sign. And I understand about the, the rate of speed, but that is just what, of the people in my area, that that's the one that they have chosen.
I like, I like C, but it's white, I'm not sure if it would show a lot of dirt. I would tend to go with A, but I wonder if we could have dark brown lettering to match the, around the.
That is certainly an option that I can bring back to you if you'd like to see that. We could, I could bring you back this version in black lettering, brown lettering, whatever you'd like to see.
So my choice would be A.
So A, okay.
I, I really like the dark brown better, so we don't agree on anything, so.
We narrowed it down to three?
I, I just, you know, I just think the dark brown with white lettering shows out better. You know, as far as the lettering goes, I, I think we ought to have something about the beaches on there, but I can live with whatever the board's wishes are. I just, I just worry about the tan fading, and the white, I think, will get dirty, and...
So what color background do you want? I don't understand.
I want the darker background.
Your A and my A is different.
Are different, yeah, I know. I, I'm looking at the thing, I'm looking at the old one.
You want the black background?
I like it better, but I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not married to it, so whatever the board wishes, I'm okay with.
That's where we are, we need to...
Maybe we need...
All right, I can, if you'd like, I can make some changes and bring back three options, and then perhaps when Commissioner Chapman is back from being ill, we can readdress it, but that way they'll give me a chance to revise this?
Apparently, he's, apparently, he's gonna be deciding vote. But I'm, I'm okay with any of them, really, whatever the board wishes, I'm okay with.
Me, too.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make some revisions to these and I'll bring them back for the next meeting and we can have a further discussion on it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just, do we have any comments from the audience on this? Bill? Please state your name and spell your last name for it.
Phil Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. I'm just curious why you can't make that sign a little bigger, you're not gonna be able to read anything on there except Walton County, and it looks to me like you could make it a little bit wider, so you could read everything you're putting on it. And I agree with, with Jay, you don't want a lot on there because people are driving by, but established date should be a lot bigger than it is, if that's what you're trying to emphasize. Thanks.
I think they're like, they were built this way, that you can't, can't stretch them.
These are, these are, these are updating the pre-existing signs that are there, so we're using that framework.
Richard, would you?
Good morning, Richard Veldman. The existing signs that we're now using are the black with the white lettering, and how many years have those been up? Or dark brown, I'm sorry.
I want to say four years. Four or five years?
Four or five years, and they still look like they're brand new, and I think that's something to consider is, you know, the maintenance of the signs and having to repaint them, so that's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veldman.
So Jay, I guess it's the consensus for you to bring back some more options, or narrow these down some?
Yeah, I think we narrowed it down to three, so I'll make those revisions. So Commissioner Jones, would you like to see the tan with the brown, the brown and the black lettering? Because I can get that.
The tan with the brown lettering?
Okay, I can bring back both options for the board to consider.
But, but you know, I'm fine, it's, I'm fine with whatever the board's...
We have somebody on the second row.
Somebody else?
And I've spoke with a lot of people, and we brought it up in our, we had a meeting last week at our Walton County Heritage Association, and they were fine with a lot of the options, and I explained to them after talking to Jay, you know, about, you know, the signs being busy, you know, where the Highlands meet the Gulf is a very busy tagline, so they was really receptive once I explained it to them about the Gateway to Paradise. And so they kind of leaned more towards the tan with, you know, all of the other information on there. And I appreciate y'all taking the initiative to be sensitive and put the, you know, take action on these signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Jay, I guess you have the direction from the board?
Okay, I'll make the updates that we discussed and I'll bring it back to the board for the next meeting. Let's see, the, the next item, number 20, update and request direction regarding Highway 331 South Properties, parcels number 292S19240000080040 and 292S192400000080070. So these are the, there's two scenarios that we're looking at. The last meeting, Commissioner Chapman instructed me to go and present to the council another option besides the properties, the sand castles and regional utility pieces, and also the plumbing piece, and I'll, I'll give you an update on that in just a moment. So in addition to those properties, to look at the property adjacent to the Air Force Tower and the Annex. And so I brought both of these options forward to the council at a special meeting that we held on Friday the 13th, and so the council met and they discussed it, and their recommendation is to move forward with the two parcels, the sand castles and the regional utility pieces. Just a quick update on the third parcel, the plumbing parcel that we were originally looking at, there was a death in the family of the owners, and so they have taken that property off of the market. The real estate agent said they may still be willing to talk to us specifically about the purchase of that property, and so it is, the appraisals that we received back, though, were high based on, were low, I'm sorry, based on the asking price of what the owners were looking for. They were asking $950,000 for their property, and the appraisals came in, and you should have them in your books. Again, I just want to stress that the appraisals are confidential at this point, so it makes it a little challenging for us to talk about it here, but you can kind of see the appraisals for that plumbing property, they're well below what the owner's asking for that. So I don't think that we need that property to move forward with those other two parcels, I think they'd be sufficient for a building, adding to what's currently there, there is one building there, I think it's 5,600 square feet, we could add another building to that site, and then we could use the property, the regional utilities property piece for parking. So that's what we discussed at the TDC meeting, and so there were a few considerations that the council took under consideration, and so one was being closer to the bridge, being closer to coming into South Walton, and then there were a couple of issues with the site for the Annex. And the number one reason, I think, is the amount of space that the county has available to it. I think at the last meeting, I mentioned that the Air Force does own the transmitter site, and so we did find the plans for the government complex, and I'll show you here. So here you can kind of see, we had superimposed the transmitter site property that's owned by the Air Force over the plans for the government complex, and you can see, at one point, there were plans to put four buildings on that site. And with the Air Force owning that property, it greatly impairs what we're able to do at that site. We would lose two buildings in their entirety, a 17,000-square-foot building and an almost 13,000-square-foot building, and then we'd also lose 130 parking spaces, and the transmitter guy wires would also impact the other building on the front part of the property facing 331. So it would greatly diminish what the counties would be able to do with this property now that we know kind of what the impact is with the Air Force owning that. So the council made the recommendation to consider the sand castles and the regional utilities pieces, so that's kind of where we are at this point.
What's the board's wishes?
What do you need from us, Jay?
Well, I'd like to have a motion to move forward. If you'd like me to negotiate with the owners, I can. Both owners have said that they would take the lower of the appraised values, so I feel good with that, and to be honest, I don't know if there's a lot more room to negotiate based on that, but if the board would like me to, I'd be happy to go back and talk to those owners. If not, then I'd like to move forward with a contract to purchase those two pieces of property.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, comment, please. Sidney, I just want to confirm after a couple of emails that I've received, that even though we have a unique relationship with Regions, kind of bit of a symbiotic, the sale of their property to us is a complete legal, separate transaction, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. There, there would be no legal impediment to us purchasing the property from Regional Utilities.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the audience? Richard? Richard, please spell your last name.
Morning, Commissioners, Richard Veldman, V-E-L-D-M-A-N. I'm currently chairman of the Tourist Development Council and wanted to be here this morning because I believe this is a real major milestone move for the TDC. The building that we're in right now is, I think we've been in it 25 years, and I think this move will be a permanent move for the Tourist Development Council. There's plenty of room for future use, not only, but as Jay mentioned, when you come across that bridge, we want to be the first thing you see. And after you cross the bridge and you see the restaurant on the right-hand side, the TDC Welcome Center will be the first thing. The two things that we're dealing here with is, number one, we're out of room, and number two, you can't get into the tourist center with, since 331 has been divided, and so it's like two U-turns to get in and two U-turns to get out, and if you look at the statistics on visitors that come to the Welcome Center ever since they widened 331, it's really diminished. I personally believe that if you all approve this location, this is where the TDC will be for the rest of our lives, and I recommend that y'all move forward on it. Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, for your service on the TDC board, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you for appointing me.
Anyone else? Mr. Bagby?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the, I guess I will, B-A-G-B-Y. The, I think I'll channel Commissioner Chapman. I reached out to the Eglin Real Estate folks and asked if anybody in the county had contacted them, because if you go back and you look in the county records, there was talk about when you leased the three 10-by-10 parcels, that they were gonna take the tower down, but they couldn't afford, they didn't have money in their budget to do that at that time. And so there were... And so, um, they're working to see if they still need that tower. Uh, I would just ask, before you, you run down this road, uh, you approach the Air Force or at least engage the Air Force and see if they're willing to either transfer the property with a swap or maybe just give you the property or sell you the property or whatever for the cost of taking down that tower. Before you spend, you know, TDC, TDT, uh, we, we ought to think about this because that spot is the best spot for the TDC office building. And we've been through this, you know, with the force, we've been through this. Now, we're buying parcels that we really don't need to buy, uh, if, if we can get the property from the Air Force. So, I would ask that we go back in your direction, be, investigate that tower site and see if the Air Force is willing to do it for less than what these two people are willing to sell their property for. Because my guess is, they probably are. And it, since they had already stated, uh, in emails that they were looking to tear it down, they just didn't have the money. I bet you can probably get it torn down for a lot less money than you're getting ready to spend. Thank you.
Chairman, I mean, Mr. Jones, didn't you contact the Air Force?
Mr. Chairman, we did. And in our initial conversation, and I don't, I'm not privy to the emails Mr. Bagby spoke of, of where they were willing to tear the tower down. Uh, if, if they're there, they're, you know, they're there. Uh, but the, the, in our initial contact, the Air Force was hesitant to give us any information about the tower. With the, and they came back with the question basically is, why are we asking? And we told them we were simply trying to determine ownership. And they said, well, we had heard a rumor that you were interested in buying this property. And we said, well, that's not our intent at this point. If the property were available, it might be something the board would consider. But at this point, we're simply trying to determine ownership of the property. And they promptly produced us a deed that indicated that they had purchased the property in 1955 from St. Joe Company. So, there was, um, you know, there was certainly nothing on their part that indicated that they had any desire of selling, tearing down the tower or anything. So, I would be interested in, um, what might have, uh, transpired earlier.
Okay. Mr. Osborne?
For the record, Alan Osborne, I happen to know a lot about this tower because I'm the chief of range operations out at Hurlberg. The main purpose of what's left of this, Mr. Bagby's correct, it's been bought a long time ago. There's not a lot of use for it. But what use there is of it is the height of the tower. I bet you could get the Air Force to go along with you because I'm one of the people who needs to use that tower. But I just need to use it for a repeater to run LMRs. Anybody who's a police officer knows what Motorola's are. You have other places in the county that you could probably offer to Eglin in exchange to mount their repeaters and thereby get the property for almost nothing, accomplishing something for them and accomplishing something for you. I think you should consider this. And there are people here that could help you talk to the right people. One of them's standing right here in front of you. Let me know. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Harris?
Well, I would hope at the very least.
Ms. Harris, please state.
Suzanne Harris, S.U.Z.A.N.N.E.H.A.R.R.I.S.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would hope at the very least you would put off the vote today and see if Eglin is willing to swap it, give it away with just retaining the tower and just give it to us. That would be such a coup for the county not to spend any money and get a piece of property for free that all you had to do was let them use their tower for Motorola purposes. And anybody that would rather spend money than get something for free that will work, um, I think y'all really need to look at that. I have another question. If you buy the regional utility property, do you have any intentions of allowing a driveway through that property to access the land, uh, that is behind it?
Jay, would you answer that question?
I would say the short answer is no, because we're going to use that for parking. Uh, we'll probably also need some of that property for wet, uh, stormwater retention. So, I would say no. But, I mean, unless, you know, we really start digging into the project, I can't answer that with 100% certainty.
Ms. Harris, as, as far as I'm concerned, uh, I think the TDC needs that full property. If that's the way we decide to go, I don't see any way that I would be.
Well, I know that the, I know the property owner behind it. And to the sides of it, there is, uh, an LLC, uh, that owns part of it, made up of Mr. Blue's wife, Mr. Schibman's wife and, uh, Mr. Aker's wife that also owns some property.
I can assure you, there's been no discussion.
And I just want to be sure that we're not buying a piece of property just to provide other people access to theirs. Since the church was approached for that and so was the plumbing company, I just want to be sure that we have our motives in line. But if you get a piece of property for free, I would at least check on that before I call this for a vote.
Jay, how large is this Air Force property?
Um, the Air Force property?
Go up on here.
Let's see.
No, no, that's US. Oh, okay.
I think the total was about three acres.
About three acres.
Oh, just a little bit smaller than what we were looking at for that.
Yeah, now, the, I mean, the, the property, you know, just south of there, our, our property, uh, that's about, um, two and a half, I believe, if I remember correctly. So, um...
Co-location to me seems ideal.
I know we have a motion on the floor, but could we simultaneously, uh, ask Larry Jones to reach out to the Air Force again while we're continuing with negotiations with the, you know, that's not going to slow down the project. But I, I do think that we should at least try one more time to see if it's, you know, if it's.
Sydney, do we need to withdraw those motions and?
Commissioner Commander made a motion to bring back a contract, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I will, I will be.
Or can direct us to, because we'd have to bring that back.
Right.
Okay.
Have an answer on the Air Force. And if that's no, then we can move forward with a contract. If the answer is yes, then obviously, we could just.
Okay.
Move forward with that option.
Okay.
But Larry, I would like, I mean, I understand that some of the public has gotten involved, but I want staff. I need to hear from staff that, you know, what the Air Force has to say.
Yes, ma'am.
As, as do we all.
Yeah.
Naturally, if we can get that for almost free, then we need to do.
And I like free.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I like the co-location.
Yeah, and the co-location.
All in favor to, of this motion with the, uh, add-on of, of Larry contacting the Air Force and let's.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item is request approval to provide $25,000 to support the Cultural Arts Alliance Underwater Museum of Art in Grayton Beach. This was bought before the council at the last meeting and they approved it. And so, we're bringing it before the, uh, board today. I've asked Jennifer Steele to come up and kind of do a little presentation on the underwater, uh, museum of art just so you can have a better understanding of the project. Um, so, I'll let her come up and speak to you.
Jennifer, please spell your last name.
S.T.E.E.L.E. Uh, I do have some handouts if I can.
Sure.
Let me have one for the door. Yeah, no.
Good morning. Thank you. Um, I, my name is Jennifer Steele. I'm the executive director of the Cultural Arts Alliance of Walton County. Um, we are requesting funding from the Tourist Development Council for the purpose of the inaugural, uh, underwater museum of art. It is a, uh, collaboration with the South Walton Artificial Reef Association through the CAA's partnership program to raise awareness and education and find solutions to community issues through art, including, um, marine, our marine resources. This will be the first dedicated underwater sculpture museum in the United States. And we, our intention is for this to be an annual project where we will work with artists nationally, locally, and also internationally to present a sculpture museum on the floor of the Gulf of Mexico. Um, we will be working with Suarez already, their existing permitting and, uh, specs that have already been drafted. So, everything that happens with this project will be in, in compliance with, with those permits. Um, it is already receiving international attention, um, from the press. We've had interviews with National Geographic, with Virgin Australia, Outdoor Magazine, The Guardian. So, there is a lot of interest, um, from a tourist standpoint about this project. We are having an event on, uh, Thursday, May 10th where the sculptures will be, um, brought to Arts Quests. We're having an event, um, to celebrate the underwater museum. But all seven sculptures will be in place so the public can interact with them and be educated about the project before they actually go, um, into the water, uh, which will happen in June or July. We have a, a loose date on that depending on the already scheduled deployments with, uh, Suarez projects.
So, where will the event be on May the 10th?
I'm sorry, that's at Grand Boulevard in Town Center.
At what time?
At 6:00 PM.
Hypothetical question, what happens when we have a little disturbance in the Gulf?
Um, the, the base, the, sorry, the, uh, sculptures will all be attached to a 3,500-pound, uh, cement or concrete, um, pedestal. So, they will be stabilized. Um, as with all of the other, uh, scope, um, sorry, artificial reef in the Gulf, we can't completely control the, um, what happens to them once they're there. But they will be monitored and, um, they will be quite heavy. We do have.
Another theoretical question. Let's say they are disturbed. Who's going to pay for the cleanup?
Um, I, my understanding is there's no, I, I wish that, um, we had a Suarez representative.
And that sort of thing. Who, I mean, who would be responsible? Would it be Walton County?
I can get back to you on that. I don't, I don't think that that's something that we would be coming, I, I don't have a correct answer for you at this point, but I can get back to you.
I have a question for Jay.
What's, okay. Jay?
Thank you very much.
Let's, let's see if there's a motion on the floor yet. Anybody?
Can I, can I add one more thing? Um, this project does have support from the National Endowment for the Arts and also Visit Florida. And the Alice Foundation has committed dollars too. So, what we're requesting is not full funding, but a match funding for those, for that support we've already received.
What's the board's wishes?
I'm, I make a motion that we approve this. We're getting national recognition. I like for us to be on the cutting edge of new things. And the arts are very important from school age all the way up. So, I make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second for discussion. I've got a question for Jay. Jay, I, I'm not sure if you've got my email. Just my, my concern is, um, can you, as a TDC, just explain your procedure for non-pro, this is a nonprofit? And how you, uh, vet the nonprofit so that one doesn't say, well, you supported one and you didn't support the other, just so I have an understanding?
Well, I mean, it's all based on the merit of the request. And so, uh, and all the requests go through the council. And the council, uh, evaluate all those items. And then, they move those forward to the board and then the board, uh, votes on them. So, that's kind of how we, it's a case-by-case basis. So, you know, in this case, CAA is coming forward and asking for these dollars. And the council approved it based on its merits.
Excuse, are you, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Uh, have we had any national recognition on this yet? I mean, is there?
I believe so. Um, do you want to address that?
We, we have had, um, David Demarest from the TDC has, has been working with the PR agency, um, to get the word out along with the CAA. And we have had a lot of interest in, mostly, people are interested in when the project is actually going forward. They want images, they want video. And our budget includes all of those things so that we can provide real-time and, um, and, um, current information to the press. They're really, they're really, the feedback we're getting is we're really interested in when it happens.
David can add a little bit.
Question?
Hi, David Demarest, Director of Communications for the TDC. And yes, we pitch, uh, various news stories of happenings in South Walton. And this is one that has gotten the most interest this year. And I think this year is going to be especially important because, uh, this will be the first, um, underwater museum of art in, uh, the United States. So, that's something that's really, um, grabs the attention. And it also does a really good job telling the story of Walton County and how we combine arts and ecology and, of course, our beautiful Gulf waters. Um, one other thing, and, and so, we have had a lot of attention already in print. Uh, and we've got a lot of, uh, excitement about more to come at this point. I want to just clarify that the site for this is about .7 miles off Grayton Beach and it's in about 50 feet of water. Um, so, the likelihood of it, it being disturbed by, uh, any, any storms is fairly low. And likelihood of it reaching the beach, um, even lower.
So, that answers my question. Only people that scuba dive are going to be able to see this.
Yeah, it's a, it's a real.
I snorkel, but I can't go, so, so.
It's, it's a great reason to learn to scuba dive and come to Walton County and visit us.
Also, though, also fishing, right? I mean, people can put in a kayak on the beach and go out there and fish. I mean, it's going to attract fish, right?
Kind of creating an artificial reef.
In, in every artificial reef, uh, on our Gulf floor really does a good job attracting marine species.
Chairman Anderson, I, I would assume that it could be filmed and shown on National Geographic or anyone that would be interested. So, you don't really have to put a wet suit on. You could look at it on National Geographic or, you know, as well.
Absolutely. And there, there are ways we can bring it to the public, uh, above, uh, water as well in terms of showing them the models of it, showing the photography. So far, um, the media pickup has used the artist renderings, um, since the sculptures did not exist yet. And so, we've already gotten mileage out of that sort of material. And when we get, uh, the photos, when the reefs are, uh, put in the water, when we can scuba dive around them and get that video, it, you know, it's something that, um, not everyone needs to visit for Walton County to benefit from.
Any discussion from the audience? Ms. Harris? Bob, you'll be next.
I think it's a great idea. I think y'all ought to give them more money. Uh, I think that advertising that on major stations that we advertise on, I think it ought to be something that y'all give them enough money to do extra advertising to help get people here. I think it's absolutely wonderful. And I think that 25,000 is a drop in the bucket. And I wouldn't worry about if a storm come refixing it because if it becomes nationally known that we have that here and people are coming for it, you'd want to fix it. I want to fix my building if a storm hits it. But I think it's absolutely a wonderful idea. And I think y'all ought to actually consider giving them more money.
Bob?
Just real quick while Bob's coming up, I would like to just address Ms. Harris's comments. Um, this is just the first phase of this project. So, CAA will be back in the future for some additional funds. So, and I, and I'm sure we'll look hard at those funding opportunities.
Bob Brook, B.R.O.O.K.E. A, a couple of questions, please. Mr. Chairman, uh, was this, was this in the TDC budget? Under a line item or is, under a budget?
We had mu, we had money set aside both for, um, the underwater museum and for Suarez.
And, and I, I noticed that this is, uh, just to help underwrite expenses. So, I'm curious, what are the total expenses or was the estimated expense? And what are the annual maintenance costs? And where will they come from?
Uh, the total project budget for this, uh, for this year is, um, around $60,000. Um, and the project will, will have budget for monitoring it. But we won't be able to continue the project unless we get funding for the, the pre, the next year. So, we will launch this first deployment, but we will be fundraising constantly for this project, um, for further deployments, including 2019.
So, will this, this be a continuing requirement from the TDC to provide funding annually?
Well, we will be requesting funding from various sources and, um, the TDC is a natural partner. So, it's not, it's not dependent on TDC support, but we will be, uh, requesting TDC. TDC support.
Thank you. Do you have any estimate on how many visitors per year you'll have coming to see this underwater museum that are, I assume, scuba divers?
We don't have that.
Okay.
We're always reluctant to estimate on numbers.
To provide real data on whether or not it's gonna be?
It's a new estimate in which we don't like to do that. I mean, we like to do things in the back end, we will certainly do some analysis of this in the silver.
Okay, so this is just a guess, or no guess at all, you're just assuming people will come, build it and they will come. Okay, thank you. Lee?
Please spell your last name.
Thank you, Commissioners, Lee Moore, M-O-O-R-E, and I just ditto what Ms. Harris said. Thank you.
Lee, could you meet with me shortly after the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jim Bagby, B-A-G-B-Y, and I would also echo what Lee and Ms. Harris said. I would not only approve the 25,000 request, I would direct the TDC to include 25,000 in the budget that they should be developing for next year for this, you know, this, this is your local arts authority. These are the folks, and we, and I have enormous respect for Bob, but this is the Songwriters' Festival, okay? What were the projections for the Songwriters' Festival the year before it started? Nobody knew. That thing is huge, okay? They have proven their commitment to this county, they have proven, a proven track record of success, and would I go out there and scuba dive to, probably not, but, you know, a lot of people would, and even if it's, it's only 500, you know, they bring their families with them, they spend money, and they're gonna pay, you're gonna get that 25,000 back. So I would just ask that you not only approve this, but in a separate motion or in the same motion, you direct the TDC to include it in next year's budget. Thank you.
Anybody else? What's the board's wishes?
I believe I have a motion on the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just so, you know, Mr. Bagby, I'm sure that request will be brought up with, in front of the TDC Board, so.
Turn the budget now. Okay, great, thank you very much. And lastly, I'd just like to do a quick update. We discussed at the last meeting some committee appointments, and so I am working with County Legal, so we have a question of quorum that we're trying to resolve and work through right now, so I think we'll have a favorable response moving forward, but anyway, I'm working on that right now with Sydney, so I'll have that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
So the thought process is, is to have nine and reduce the number required for a quorum through a resolution of the board. That's what we're working on right now. And that's it for me, any questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, the first item I have is item number 23, it's an update on environmental research and design, or Dr. Harper. I'm gonna pass this out, and I apologize, it's not in your books. I received a proposal late yesterday afternoon from Dr. Harper for him to complete the original scope of services from the 2015 contract that we had with him. I'm sorry, let me get it a little closer. So late yesterday afternoon, I received a proposal from Dr. Harper to complete the originals 2015 scope of services. Since I just got that yesterday afternoon, I don't have a contract ready for you, but I can have that at the next board meeting, so that's my update.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just to complete and not adding anything extra?
That's correct. He removed the survey work, which was the addition in the last proposal that was sent to us. Next item I have is item number 24.
Are we gonna vote on this?
Oh, no, ma'am, I mean, if it's all right with you, I'll bring the contract back in two weeks for your consideration.
Do we take public comment on this?
Uh, yes, sir, you can.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name's Sean Heath, of course, H-E-A-T-H. I represent the Greater Driftwood Homeowners Association, who was, of course, interested in the work that Dr. Harper, E-R-D, that he performs. What you have distilled to its essence in front of you is previously Dr. Harper had submitted a contract for the board's consideration that included survey information. That survey information as part of the contract was gonna cost approximately $17,000. The survey information would be taken of the conditions that presently exist out in Driftwood. What Dr. Harper has, has given to you here is an alternative, and it is $17,000 less, it excludes the survey information. Fundamentally, that's the only difference in the, in the contracts. My client's preference is that the work that Dr. Harper does be based on the most accurate conditions in the neighborhood as they exist, and that would include the $17,000, the survey information that would needed be done to make those recommendations. In the broad scheme of things, $17,000 is de minimis relative to Driftwood and other litigation that the county has had regarding it. It is probably less than 1% of the total that has been spent related to the Driftwood issues over these years. The, presently, the county has several hundred thousand dollars allocated for improvements out there. That's fantastic, we appreciate it, but the, it's our firm conviction that the best result would be for his work to be based on the conditions as they actually exist, and not for him to assume information, and assume information that is being provided to him by the county. And I'll back up and relate why that's important. The contract for which Dr. Harper was hired calls for his analysis to be an independent engineering review, and that independent engineering review was generated from a special magistrate proceeding that occurred in 2009. Commissioner Commander fortunately recommended that the, the issues regarding Driftwood be, be referred to a special magistrate. That special magistrate had an evidentiary hearing, he emerged from that process of giving a recommended report, which was 30-something pages, in that it included recommending an independent engineer. Unfortunately, although that recommendation came down in 2010... May I have more time, Your Honor?
Just, just a second, but, but we're gonna adhere to the three minutes.
No, all this.
Okay, just, just wrap it up as quick as you can.
There was some concern about a delay in the performance of his work last time. I will point out that his, the recommendation that came from the special magistrate was given to this board in 2009. It was not until 2015 that the county followed through with the recommendation of actually hiring the independent engineer. So while we are all frustrated with the pace of this, it still behooves us to get it right, that's where we are, for a $17,000 difference. Thank you. Subject, your questions?
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Dr. Harper one of your clients?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Attorney Heath, thank you, and I just want to let it be known that I agree that we need the current information, what's on the ground there in Driftwood.
Ms. Osborne? Ms. Osborne, please keep it to three minutes. I know, I know you have a lot to say, so, but try to wrap it up, you got 30 seconds when the yellow light comes on.
For the record, Alan Osborne, I first came before this board in 2005 with this issue for my neighborhood. You received a letter from the DEO telling you what the standards were in 2007, you received another one in 2009, 2010, 2014. After no response, we entered litigation. I know we don't discuss active litigation, but that litigation is settled, and the settlement is a public record. I agreed, and a lot of people agreed, to go to the special master after all that to try to solve this, and what I'm telling you today here is try to avoid future litigation. Special master said there was a conflict, he thought there was a conflict, and I'm gonna say exactly what he says here in Dr. Harper's report, because I didn't think I had to come here, because you guys knew you had a proposal for a survey coming for two hearings, so I didn't show up last time thinking you'd absolutely approve it. And in Dr. Harper's first report, if you, if you read it, it says, "The special magistrate, magistrate recommendation from the hearing include the following language regarding stormwater issues. A review by independent qualified and experienced stormwater engineer of the Driftwood Estates' exterior stormwater system and interior stormwater system jointly should be undertaken as soon as reasonably possible to determine the, the following. One of those was whether the permitted design of Driftwood stormwater systems and a reasonable review of what had been built to determine any significant changes not consistent with the design, and determine what level of service." Also, in his report he gave you in 2015, you said you were surprised the other week. The report said, "The E-R-D, Dr. Harper's company, is currently working on the issues related to modeling of the stormwater systems and the interactions between the interior and the exterior stormwater system, and the results of these modeling efforts will be presented in a subsequent report." That's exactly what he gave you. It befuddles the mind at over $4 million of settlements, fixes, and the fact that since Dr. Harper started this, you've changed a lot out there, I think you've installed over $400,000 of one of the last testimony. Don't you wanna know if that and the money you fixing to spend are, are right? And the second thing is this, in my settlement, not what Mr. Heath's representing another group today, but mine says that you would complete the independent modeling, because in the hearing, Mr. Graham, the county engineer, he thought he had a conflict, 'cause he had worked for the developer previously. It's not independent if you tell me that I have to accept the modeling with what Mr. Graham tells him. We all agreed that we could all tell him what we thought, our representatives and the people in Driftwood told him what we thought, you told him what we thought, now we need a survey to prove it and let him run the model. It'll cost you more to go back to court with my settlement than it will to pay for this. You paid 25 grand for statues, pay for a survey.
Commissioners, the next item I have is item number 24, it's an update on the half-cent sales tax referendum, you can't hear me, I'm sorry, Ms., no. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Bill Fletcher, same spelling. Two weeks ago, I stood before this board, and after listening to all the negative comments about Dr. Harper, I jumped on board and agreed with you that, in fact, I made the statement the guy should be fired. After getting all the other information that goes with this, I owe him an apology, and that's why I'm up here to publicly apologize to him. I hope the members of the board were the same, were in the same position I was, you didn't know all the facts. I wish I would've listened to the questions from Commissioner Nipper more carefully, 'cause she was asking the right questions. As has been previously said, over the years, you've spent millions of dollars on this project for, for at least the past 15 years, and again, the, the small amount that you're looking at to finish this and make it meaningful is miniscule. As our attorney said in that last meeting, he's willing to go ahead and submit the report. The rest of that story is, he's telling you that report won't mean anything without a current survey, so I would encourage you to pass this, let's get this done, something that's been going on for well over a decade, and, and make it meaningful. Thank you.
Okay. Oh. Oh, God.
Suzanne.
I want y'all to think about if y'all are not willing to pay for this survey, and you're willing to pay for what he sent today to finish his report, and he's told you this is meaningless and won't hold up in court, and it goes to court, y'all paid to finish something that you know's gonna end up in court and won't hold up in court. So I'm gonna ask you this, if I pay for the survey, and it comes back and says all the work y'all have done at Driftwood is wrong, and the work you're fixing to do between now and then is wrong, you're gonna end up in court again. So somebody needs to pay for that survey, and I think I'm probably willing to pay for it if the county's not, because y'all need to know, before you spend all this money for the county, you need to know if what you're doing out there now is right or wrong. And if you don't wanna know whether what you're spending all our taxpayers' money on is gonna work or not, then I have to question why y'all don't wanna know.
And I completely agree, and I've said it over and over and over.
So, item number 24, no, sorry. I think Greg's coming up.
Greg Graham, for the record, county engineer, I normally don't come up and, and to the board, but, less asked, but I just wanted, since my name has been brought up and, and it's, I've constantly been thrown under the bus since probably about 2008, since I got involved in the whole Driftwood issue. I did work for the Sandeston Development Group, and I've disclosed that in the past numerous times. Back in 2008, there was one question that was asked, and there was an attempt by our engineering staff to answer that question, was the interior, when it was built out, was it going to flood the exterior? At that particular point in time, since approximately about 2005, one of the major outfalls for Driftwood had been blocked by the Edmonds, the Edmonds Outfall, and that is when there was a lot of picture taken, at the, at the same time, there was the development on the interior was going on, so a lot of the problems that were, the, the standing water on the road, on Buck Road, and shipwreck was a result of Edmonds Outfall getting blocked. The modeling that was done was to answer a bigger question, was, is the interior gonna flood the exterior? Well, I think by now, we know that's not the case, okay? We've had 200-year events, one in 2013, one in 2014, and it didn't even wind up on the ICPAL area of study. The, there, I keep hearing about flooding issues at, at Driftwood, there are not flooding issues at Driftwood. There is some nuisance drainage, and you'll get that in any swell system or drainage ditch system in the county, where basically somebody will block a culvert, somebody won't install a culvert, so the system that we're doing currently is actually Phase 2. We've done Phase 1 out there, and actually received the letters from the homeowners association, they were very happy with it. This is a second retrofit project to basically accomplish two things, eliminate the standing water in the ditches, and provide a hard piping system so that you don't have somebody downstream from you creating a problem with the drainage. And that's, that's basically, the system that we've put in there has also been bedded through a cost-benefit analysis to avoid utility relocations. It's, you know, I don't have a problem personally with whether Dr. Harper gets as-built information or not, but I personally don't see a benefit to, or any changes that the county is, in the current program for going through around the exterior that will come out of it. But just for the record, that's, that's where we're at, and as far as the millions of dollars that's spent, I think it's been primarily litigation, because a handful of people did not like the change in the development plan that occurred in Driftwood, if the fact being known, that's the real issue.
I think full transparency is a real, is, is the major issue. Just full transparency of what is going on, if the new survey of what is on the ground is $17,000, I'm in favor of it, and that's just my opinion.
Can I answer any questions?
Greg, when, when will, when will the, all the drainage updates be completed?
The, we just completed Phase 2, it was approximately 1,800 linear feet, there's three more phases that are, that are going in to basically get around the exterior road, and we've got a budgeted Phase 3 in, in this year's capital improvement program, so if y'all continue funding it, three years from now, we should, should be able to make it around the whole exterior road. it around the whole exterior road.
Thank you, Greg.
Item number 24?
Just a second.
We're not voting on this. At some point, enough is enough.
Jim Bagby, B A G B Y, just have a couple of questions. First question is, I'm not involved with Driftwood or anything, but from an environmental standpoint, I go back to when this first came up, and are we pumping stormwater directly into the bay? Because that, that was my understanding of the improvements. If we, if we are, and we're not, you know, putting it in retention ponds or putting it somewhere where it can seep, you know, everything washing off every road or every driveway or whatever, if that's going straight to the bay, that, that's probably not what we want. And the second question I would have is, what, what is the total cost for all three phases or all the corrective action that we're doing out there? Because 17,000 does not seem like a lot. If we're spending probably millions of dollars to do this, you know, another 17,000 seems like it'd be a good investment. So if somebody could answer those two questions, I appreciate it.
The, the current system that was permitted, is in place on the exterior road, was a swell treatment system, basically. It, and in, in some areas, in addition to it being a swell treatment, there's like ditches, and yes, it basically is collected off the road and the exterior portion of the homes that front the, the road, and it goes to the bay. This project actually is putting in a water quality treatment box to actually improve the existing water that's going out to the bay at Driftwood. So it's, in addition to it being a conveyance improvement, it's also a water quality improvement. And it's been permitted to the Water Management District.
Do we have a cost on that?
For the, for the contractor cost estimate that was done was approximately 2 million. I think we did it in, this, this project in-house for about 150,000. This eighth, for second phase, approximately, I think we've got 150,000 in materials into the project. So overall, if you were to contract out the remaining phases, I think we're about, it's about a $2 million project.
And you're still under the assumption that we don't need a survey of what is on the ground right now in order to finish Dr. Harper's report?
No, I think that Dr. Harper, when he provided his original scope, he did not have survey as part of his scope. And I think it's primarily the, you know, I'm, I'm not really quite sure of the benefit of Dr. Harper's report. Who, what is it gonna, what is?
Because there's been so many changes since 2009. I mean, we're in 2018. The entire surface has changed.
I mean, the fact of the matter is, I thought the whole reason for Dr. Harper's report was to determine if Driftwood is flooding. I think it's well established, there are not flooding problems at Driftwood.
Well, I think there's more than just flooding issues, concerns.
Oh. Well, the reason the modeling was done back in 2008 was to address one question, when the interior got built out, was it going to flood the exterior? And that, that didn't happen.
Retention, detention, there was, I, I personally think there was more than that.
But there's a, there's also a water quality issue. There, there's a, I mean, one of the other issues was the fact that there's an argument that we should be utilizing the original DRI stormwater standard for all the development at Sandeston and Driftwood. And what was utilized over the years was the current standards in place, stormwater quality standards that were in place with the county and the Department of Environmental Protection. So every development that has occurred out within the DRI area actually obtained county permits and also the state permits. So, you know, Dr. Harper's report discussed the fact, he utilized the same methodology that was utilized in 1970, when they didn't even have water quality regulations in place at that particular time, and applied it to Driftwood. And I personally feel that's a misapplication, and that the better standard is the water quality and standards that are in place today. And I wrote a white paper to try to break down Dr. Harper's analysis for the benefit of the board.
Thank you, Greg.
I want to say, Greg, I stand with you. You're tired of your integrity being questioned, and I am more than tired of my integrity being questioned. I have done everything for the past 12 years I could do to help Driftwood, and I was sued at every turn, and to be questioned about my integrity is a little more nineteen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number 24 is an update on the half-cent sales tax referendum. Commissioners, at the March 27th meeting, which was a morning meeting here in Defeniac Springs, you authorized my office to go forward with the half-cent sales tax referendum and placing that on the August primary this year. Right after that meeting, in fact, that very same afternoon, I found out from the Florida Association of Counties, I received an email from them about a House bill. Do we need to take a break?
Yeah, we need to take about a 10, 15, 10-minute break?
Okay. So shortly after that meeting in March, I found out about a new requirement that was added to a House bill. It was placed in the bill towards the end of session, and I apologize, I did not know about that requirement before you voted to have this referendum in the August primary. My office, Heather primarily, has been working with the state agency that's responsible for doing the audit. That's the new requirement in the House bill. It requires an audit 60 days prior to the referendum being held, and Heather's been working with that state agency. We won't be able to place the referendum on the August primary. We could place it on the November general election, but if we were to do that, we would need to go ahead and set a public hearing for May 8th, which is our next board meeting, or sometime mid-May at the latest. The state agencies would need a copy of that approved ordinance by the board so they can start the procurement process to find the CPA to conduct the audit. So I, again, I apologize that I didn't know about this before you voted on it back in March. So now I'm just asking for direction to see if you'd like to place it on the general election and another option, you know, for the board's consideration. I did check with the school districts. For their capital improvement projects, they have to hold a referendum in May 2019, and that may also be an option that you guys would like to consider, since they're already going to be holding an election at that time. And again, I apologize.
Well, as much as I wanted this to, to go through, I, I see the value of, of improvements. I don't see how we can give it a whole lot of justice between now and November, and we have been told that the November ballot is going to be packed with stuff that our glorious people in Tallahassee have put on the ballot. So I think maybe joining in with the school board might give us enough time to get everything done and, and still have it on the ballot.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comment from the audience? All in favor?
Aye. And so commissioners, I'll work with the school district to get that date, and we'll set the public hearing for the approval of the ordinance, once we have that information.
A public comment? Public comment?
Yeah. I asked if we had any.
Oh, we did? Oh, yeah. We're going to take?
We're going to take about a 10 to 15-minute break. We're back in session.
Yes.
Sid, would you?
Yes, sir. The next item I have is, item number 26 and 27 are related. Item number 26 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution authorizing expenditure of TDT funds for the property purchase on Driftwood Road.
Any board discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye. And item number 27 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the closing documents for that property purchase. The closing will be held this Thursday.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And commissioners, the final item I have is a request to review the beach activities ordinance, the draft beach activities ordinance, and provide my office with comments. As you'll remember, we've already set the public hearing for this on May 8th at 1:00 PM at the annex, but pursuant to our policy, my office is supposed to provide you with the draft and then receive any comments. You can tell me any comments that you may have today, and then I'll also be meeting with each of you individually prior to the public hearing.
Excuse me, all the changes are in blue. Is that what I read?
Yes, ma'am.
The changes are blue?
Yes, and they're primarily, I think, on page 12 and 13, maybe page 12. I'm sorry, 10 and 12. Okay, and that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Nipper?
Yes, I do. A request for board's permission to direct staff to bring back a proposal for the, Rick, can you bring it, bring it up? It's, it's Blackstone, near Blackstone.
Mossy Head parcel.
The Mossy Head parcel, but it's near the Black, sometimes I get it wrong, Blackstone. It's hard to see, but this is approximately, I'm thinking, 40 acres. The reason we, we don't know exactly is because we, the county also owns the southern half, but the whole goal is to bring a planned unit development for this parcel, which is just south of the school off of Highway 90, and for affordable and workforce housing. And part of the reason we are requesting this is, to begin with, it's about a quarter mile from the Loves I-10 interchange. There's a school there, there's a Dollar General, that's almost the quality of a small grocery store. And we have been informed that within the next two years, we should expect about 2,000 contractors from the military for the hypersonic testing that has been approved on, on Eglin. And between Oaklus and Walton, we've been told, get ready. And we really do not have any workforce housing. And this is not just for workforce, not just for the contractors, but this is to consider our firefighters, our teachers, nurses, our physical therapists, and our military. And I don't know if you realize, if you go to the pay scales, our military start out at about $1,600 a month. So that's about $400. We have an elevated cost of rentals in our county, and this affordable will help, and this workforce housing will help these, that level of income to be able to afford to live in Walton County. And I think it's a very good location, it's county-owned, and if you have any questions, comments?
Well, I, I'm a, I'm kind of a free-market guy. I don't see where the, are you asking the county to sell this property, or?
DeeDee, can you explain how this has been done in the past? Because this is, this was what was proposed or suggested, I guess Larry?
Sure. In conversation with the commissioner and others that have been interested in this project, we kind of compared it to the industrial park in Mossy Head, where we made it a, a planned unit development that made the development process streamlined and expedited. So when in discussions with the commissioner, we kind of came to the conclusion that that was what she was looking to do here, transfer of the property, perhaps may or may not be in a different scenario than it was in the industrial park where we sold property. Typically, when you talk about housing projects, those that come and do those things are looking for some incentives. If you recall, in, in the industrial park, the incentives were very, very limited. In fact, only one was granted to one project owner. So this step would say, if you want to do a development on this parcel, this is how you would do it. It would, it would create that planned unit development that would facilitate and expedite that process. Now, the, the acquisition of property and the other incentives that may go along with it are kind of a separate discussion that may or may not take place to separate time. This pro, this process, if you ask staff to move it forward, would simply develop a, whether it was a PUD or some other mechanism similar to, that would again expedite and streamline the, the development order process specifically for this parcel. Did that?
Anybody else in the board have anything? Anybody from the audience? Bonnie?
Hey, she's coming up. I'm sorry, maybe you answered my question, but I don't understand. This is county property.
County-owned property, yes, ma'am.
Are we going to be willing to sell it to individuals? Are we going to develop the property ourselves?
That's a, well, it's maybe a simple question. We don't have a simple answer, because we haven't gotten that far. The, the request today is to put in place a process to develop, whether that be an individual or a county, whether you decide to give the property, whether you sell the property, all those things are to come later. This would simply say, this is the process that whomever a developer may be would go through in order to put some type of workforce structured housing on.
Hi, I'm Bonnie McQuiston, M C Q U I S T O N. So the county owns surplus property, which means the public, this belongs to the public, and the county has decided that the highest and best use of this property is to put affordable housing. Now, anytime, now, with your statistics that you gave us, Commissioner Nipper, I don't know why you don't have developers clamoring to get property like this, and I don't know why this property won't be sold, isn't going to be sold on the free market. Sounds like it's going to be a, a really good deal for developer. However, anytime that the government tries to replace the free market with a controlled market, it generates a lot of questions. For instance, what is affordable housing? What is affordable housing? Is it single home ownership? Is it apartments? Is HUD housing mixed in? How many homes, if it's single homes, will go in? What will be the price? Affordable housing to you may not be affordable to me. Affordable housing for a fireman may not be affordable housing for an employee of the truck stop. What is affordable housing? Define it. And is the county going to maintain some ownership? Are you going to partner with a developer? Is it going to be offered to several developers? If you don't maintain some kind of ownership, you can't control that market. You're talking about a controlled market, a piece of land with a controlled market, whether it's controlled rent or controlled price of houses. Next, the developer, what is his incentive? If he has a cap on what he can ask for a home, if his labor and costs go up, you got to have some kind of built-in, he needs to make a profit. Now, what does that mean for income level? If you decide it's a $100,000 house, what is the income level to qualify for that? What about resale? Let's say a person wants a home, own a home in there, and they, they meet the qualifications for a mortgage, and they're able to pay the utilities, they're able to pay home insurance, home, the taxes, property taxes. But they decide to sell. Can they make a profit? If you don't maintain some control, you cannot continue to control the market. So that, that brings up, you know, what, what involvement will the county have? And, and just the whole, a whole lot of questions that, is this, if this, is this really the highest and best use for the taxpayers of this county? And what are going to be the cost to run the utilities, the water, the sewer, the, the gas lines out there? And that cost has to be built in, and, you know, it just, I, I can't imagine that anyone, developer would go into this not knowing what his profit margin might be, or whether someone would want to buy a home where they have a suppressed market if they want to sell. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Mr. Richardson, please, please spell your last name, Donny.
Good morning. Donny Richardson, R I C H A R D S O N. I don't really need to be here today. I need to be dropping seed in the ground, but this is very important to us coming from my, where we live. I was really disappointed that there was not a public hearing of some kind in Moss Head. Normally, if you do something like this, people will be notified what was going to take place. But I've seen no public hearing on to get input or anything, but there's plenty of cheap property for sale in Mossy Head, plenty of lots. All the way from Mossy Head to the Oaklus County line, there's plenty of property. There's a lot of houses being built, and I call them crackerbox houses, and they're not that expensive houses. But we have to be very careful not to just use county property. We don't need to get into the housing business. You commissioners have plenty to do with infrastructure, with building roads, with, and also it concerns me, the sc- building roads, with, and also, it concerns me, the school, we may need infrastructure in Wal, in Mossy Head. Why get rid of the property? We have some of the most expensive parking lots in probably the United States because you're having to buy property back now that was not kept years ago, you know, in the South End. Let's keep this property. There's no need you've got to do something with it, because our schools may have to increase, may have to enlarge. We have some extra school, property for our schools out there, but nothing says we may not need more. You may need more infrastructure also. As far as jobs, they're not here. They're not here, not now. And the thing is, is if we bring in too low income, we're going to totally destroy our school out there. Social economics kill schools. And when you kill a school, if you bring a school in there and it becomes an F-school, you can forget bringing in individuals who have educations, who want, who can actually help our county with good jobs. Maybe I suggest we look at getting some high-speed internet that would help jobs in our county. We've got a lot of people who would love to work, you know, and have the opportunity, but we don't have internet system that we can do that. Infrastructure in our area is a disaster also. The other day, when the truck turned over on the interstate, you're seeing Highway 90, it looked like 38. We could not, we cannot take a lot more people out there without some more infrastructure increasing. That is, that is a problem. I mean, Highway 90 was horrible. So let me just suggest you look at those things. I'd prefer that the county not get in the housing business. You have enough to do without getting in the housing business, because it's going to cost us taxpayers. There's going to be roads put in there, sewage, water. We've got a lot to look at. Not only that, you know, what other problems we may have, low-income housing, the crime, et cetera, that could come along with this, is my concern. So let me just beg you to please, let's stay out of the, let's stay out of the housing business, and, you know, do infrastructure. Give us roads to drive on. Give us an, hopefully, an economy that is booming, that we can get some doctors back here. It's bad having to haul your parents to Tennessee Colored to see a doctor, because we can't get them in Walton County. We don't have good enough jobs that people can have insurance, they can pay doctors to come here. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Jill Graham, last name G-R-A-H-A-M, and I am here kind of representing Benesi Development Company, who owns Blackstone. And just to let y'all know, there is plenty of vacant land for housing development in various different phases. We own approximately 1,200 acres on the opposite side of the school, and it has four areas of ingress and egress that are not located on Highway 98. I look at the school, and I look at it as an asset, just like when we built up in Silver Oaks, and that was in Okaloosa County. We got a middle school there. You need schools to be able to make a town. You need to bank this property for future school development, because I've been here 31 years. I've watched where development goes. There's a great corridor that goes through there, Highway 90, and if you put in low-income housing right on Highway 90, first of all, that's one red flag. Number two, it is right by an elementary school. Who is going to maintain that property? Is it going to be maintained by the government? Are y'all going to keep the property? Are you going to give it to a developer? I know I'm repeating some of the questions that have been asked earlier, but I see where counties destined, so many counties around here own property and gave it away, and now they're regretting it. Where would you put a middle school? The logical place to put a middle school would be on that location. Or where would you put a high school when it's needed? The logical explanation would be on county on property. Once you start giving it away, it is going to be impossible for you to get back. And I just wanted to make y'all aware of the fact that there is plenty of land, and there are plenty of ways to phase it where there is affordable housing available. But what is affordable housing? What is your definition of affordable housing? I need that in writing. You know, will this be government-subsidized housing? I have those questions. Will they be for rent or purchase? Is there, we're not even into the, to the place of having a rendering or a layout on the project? Why, I just don't understand why the, why the property wouldn't be banked for future school use. And if you want Mossy Head to actually become a there-there, and I know that that is what we're working towards, because we've been doing all of these office parks and different things like that, you cannot have that without having a school system. And that's basically all I have to say.
I have a question.
Hi, Sarah.
How did, how did your development, I'm sorry, I have a brain thing. How, are you building at this particular time?
No, we're not. We actually looked into the workforce that is coming here, and it is on our scope, and it is on our, but it's not, it's not ready yet. There's not that critical need for that to be developed yet. And the other problem is, the places that we would be developing would be more for people that were probably military or that kind of thing, that had the ability to have a car, to be able to do, to drive, to do all of those things. And whenever you start with low-income housing, that's where your level's going to be. You're, you, you can add some lower-income housing later on, like maybe apartments that people could rent, or, you know, even a mobile home park, or, you know, something along those lines. But if you start with low-income housing right on Highway 98, right in front of your school, I just think that you have, it's just created a big problem.
Workforce, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Jill. My question was, why, you understand the military's coming, I guess, and that is upper, you know, middle class or middle class.
Right.
Why aren't y'all preparing for that? If we're supposed to have hundreds coming in here, and that's why I hear names where, I mean...
Yes, but when are, when are, when will they be here? And?
The house is built, and they can't...
It doesn't take, I mean, a development really, I mean, it, the hindrance is going through all of the codes paperwork and all of that and getting it through the county. But once that is done, it goes really, really quickly. It doesn't take very long to develop a subdivision.
But you're, ma'am, you're a lot septic and well? Are the majority of the lots that you have already plotted out septic and well?
We don't, we, we've just have renditions. We've done various scenarios of how we're going to do that, and we have not decided that.
Okay.
Jill?
I'm sure that it would be something that Okaloosa County, whenever we got a development order, I mean, Walton County, whenever we got a development order, would probably state whether or not we could go in one direction or another.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You said y'all own 1,200 acres, plus or minus?
Yes.
You might not want to answer this, but I know y'all have probably invested heavily in the area. And how do you see the economic impact on what y'all are trying to do and this?
Well, we've discussed having affordable housing in, in different pods of the area. I mean, whenever you look at, I wish I would have brought my board, but whenever you look at it, it, the property goes from where Blackstone is, we have an entrance, we go all the way to Laird Road, we go to High Note Road, and I'm trying to think of the road to the north, the very north end. But, I mean, there, there's so much land that is there, that it has been, we've, we've thrown everything on the table, and we've owned this property for a really, really long time. And like I said, it can be developed in pods. We have never said we were opposed to having apartments. I mean, right now, millennials are, you know, they're renting. They're not wanting to buy. But some people, especially in the military, do like a little bit more land with their, you know, home. And that's what we're looking to develop probably first, and then go into another phase. But I'm, like I said, everything's conceptual right now. There, there's a lot of tracing paper.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that was my only concern, is I've always envisioned Mossy Head as having like a town center, a there-there, and when the elementary school was put there, that was after we had already bought a lot of property there, and it was like, oh, this is, this is really going to be working out well. And I foresaw it kind of like what went on in Crestview, where, you know, they, they just, they developed it properly. And I would just hate to see y'all lose that location that could absolutely be used in the future for a school, whether it be middle school or a high school. And really, I don't think you can have a community without a high school.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, that's all.
Anybody else? Teddy?
Thank you, Commissioners. Teddy Stewart. As Ms. Graham said, Blackstone is a tremendous development, has tremendous potential. And I think everybody who lives in Mossy Head looks at Blackstone as the centerpiece, and probably one of the finest developments in North Walton County going forward. If you start out, like Ms. Graham said, with affordable or workforce housing, that nobody really knows what it is, but most likely will end up being subsidized housing, you set your ceiling. I know that, it would have been four or five years ago, the county went through the planning board and then through the county commissioners, changed the land use on the first phase of development of Blackstone, to allow them to build on larger lots, which would allow them to have septic systems instead of a sewer system. Workforce housing is critical, but I think that the private sector will provide that when it's needed. I don't think that we need to take public land in Mossy Head and create something we probably don't want. The only time I've even heard this mentioned in Mossy Head was at a town hall meeting hosted by Ms. Jones last year, where you graciously came, and it came up, but on a parcel behind your office on Highway 90. I don't recall any positive comments that came out of that meeting about that proposal. I would strongly suggest, if you want to do this, come back to Mossy Head, answer a lot of questions, and get direction from the people who live there on what we see in our future and what we would like to have. If you want to do something on that property today, expand that park, put in a basketball court, a splash pad, barbecue areas for families to spend their time. That would be a positive improvement for Mossy Head. Nobody that I've spoken to in the last week sees subsidized housing as a positive for Mossy Head, particularly right in front of our school, right next door to our park, and right next door to what we hope to be the premier development in Walton County going forward at Blackstone. I ask the Commissioners not to, not to do anything on this today. But if you want to move forward, please come out and talk to us, get our input. That's what we would like to see. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Tom Baker, B-A-K-E-R. Just, just a few comments. We all know the situation that we're in with workforce and military housing, and affordable is a part of that also. And, and we have been diligently trying to find out how we communicate with both the public, as well as the people who are calling my office on a daily basis, wanting to know how they can come to Walton County, and how they can build real nice gated communities and whatever in our county. For us to take this request and to make it into something that we don't even know what the request is, is a little, little out of, out of the way. We have had a meeting in Mossy Head, and we did listen. And, and we try our best to limit our use of the word affordable housing. But when you get into housing issues across the state and across the nation, affordable housing is much a part of what we face in the future. How we face that, we have to determine. And I understood the meeting and the request that we have today, is that we do have people that are, are calling and visiting our community to relocate very nice facilities. And, and what we did was look at all of the land that we own in Walton County, the section behind the D3 office out there, and we found that in about three weeks ago, maybe a month ago, that we have a piece of property that has total water, sewer, and internet connection that we might could, could make available to, to one of these entrepreneurs that may want to come in here and really develop something on the property. Our request, I understand it today, is for us to study and see what is the best way to manage this, and how we get involved in this, because no one, and as, as Mr. Jones has said, we really don't have all those answers. There are all a lot of good questions. And I would love to see us move forward, just to answer some of the questions and have more community meetings, to let people know exactly what the request that we have, and how we plan to meet those in the future. I don't think, I don't think anybody here today has any idea really what happens there. But it's day one of where we go with workforce and military housing, and, and really, these requests, I wish Bill Enfield was here today to say that behind closed doors, they say we're moving 2,000 people down there, what is about, by 19. Have you, are you ready for this? So, so today, I think, is, is how, how do we move forward with, with something that we own, that has water, sewer, internet, that might be available for, for some form of housing in that area? And when you take subsidized housing, it's almost in every type house that we are looking at. I mean, even the Arbor Zone Shoemaker has 21 subsidized families in that thing, a gated community. So it's hard to talk down, talk up, or whatever, about what we may face in the future, because I think we're all learning. But one thing is for certain, some change has to take place here for us to meet the demand. I read the other day, over, over the world, 2 billion homes have to be built in, in like 2030. But anyway, not to say that, how that impacts us, but today, it's my understanding, and please correct me if this is just not a study that we have asked for.
So, just move forward to see what we need. We did a study, the workforce housing study by the Haas Group in July, is as recent as it possibly can get. It's like pushing a boulder uphill with a toothpick. All I want to do is some housing that we know we need to provide for in the county.
Well, I'd like to wind up by saying that at no time have I been in any discussions where the county wants to build homes or anything like that. We're just trying to find out. We have, we have a large number of requests of people who are riding our streets, looking for how to come here. And, and I don't have all the answers to that. And, and I think they will come here, and the land is available, and they are looking at privately owned land to do this on. So just wanted to throw my two cents in, is that hopefully we can learn how, what we need to do to move forward with some form of housing for our county, the whole county.
Got a couple in the back. The guy in the beard had his hands up first, and ma'am, you'll go second. Again, please state your name and spell your last name.
Do I stand close to the microphone, or a little? Okay. So I'm Corey Mays, last name is M-A-Y-S, just like the month with the S at the end of it. All right. Commissioner Nipper, I want to support you 100% about this, bringing a development to Mossy Head. I live out there.
Thank you.
26 years old, and I live with my parents. Kind of a, you know, drawback when, just a little bit ago, I was living in Florella. I think that low-income housing should be actually available to people who live there, and also to the workforce that is supposed to be coming here. I don't think that we need to be on a drawback, because a golf course does not want to, you know, have a subsidized housing next to it. I live out there. There's nothing really for us to do. A golf course? I'm 26. I'm not 30. Not yet. I still have four more years. Then I'll pick up golfing, maybe. I'll work on my putt game. But I honestly think that we're at this point where we're at a standstill, as you said, pushing a boulder uphill with a toothpick. I live off of Brown Mason, a dirt road, a privately-owned dirt road, that if we were able to actually bring in some infrastructure, maybe we can actually update it to where ambulances and fire trucks don't get stuck on my road, and I have to pull them out. I don't know if you've ever been out there in the middle of the night with a shovel and some boards, trying to get a EMS out of the road, but I have. And it's not fun. But maybe this would actually be a push forward to actually bring infrastructure to our community, to Mossy Head. Because most of the people that are out there, I can guarantee you, if you drive out there right now, you'd probably smell meth cooking. Because on 1087, there's several houses that do that. I live where you're close enough to where... I live where you're close enough to where, in my own backyard, I got a new neighbor. She's awesome. Her family's awesome. They work down in Niceville. At the end of Spring Hill Road, immediately to your right, there's several properties there that are for sale privately, and there's been three houses that have been built off of 1087. So I mean, there is room for development out there. Do not be held back, because maybe this would be a step forward in Walton County to actually improve our infrastructure as well. Just saying. That's the end. Take care, guys.
Hi, I'm Amber Jones, it's J-O-N-E-S. So let me take a breather. Yesterday night was my first meeting ever involved with, I guess, politics. I can say for the most part, I was quite disappointed by the way that the elderly community handled themselves. There were a lot of tantrums that were thrown and a lot of just emotions that made it non-productive. I can say today, I feel that people care and people genuinely want to see change come. With that being said, I think that by pushing away lower-income housing, that's like negative in a way, because it's like blocking off a group of people, and it's not only one group of people. My dad was in the military, and when we came here, we had nowhere to stay. We stayed with my grandparents for a little bit. He had to go to Japan. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional, but my mother had to move into a trailer at the time with me and my siblings. It was not fun. It wasn't what we were used to. We came from Texas, where there was affordable housing for the military community, and I felt safe there. When I moved here, I had friends that lived all around Defniac, and I can say for a well-known fact, because I experienced it for myself, she lived close to West Defniac. And I haven't even told my mother this, but I was raped in eighth grade within walking distance of that school. I don't know if you guys consider that low income or not, but I mean, anything can happen anywhere. So who are you to say if you bring affordable housing here, it's gonna stop or, you know, block off any income or anything positive to that area? That's not true. And I think it just takes, you know, like he said, the community working with you guys to get a clear understanding of what is truly needed. It has to be like a buffer in between, like how it's a generational gap within churches and my generation, that's what's going on here. It's a gap and the information is being lost, and people are making decisions based off of what they're accustomed to and what they were raised off of, and that's not fair, because this change in the world is changing. I mean, minorities are right now predominantly people of color or Hispanics, but there's gonna be a time where minorities are not determined by race, but by circumstances, because there's trash in every race, excuse my French. But I mean, you're talking about not bringing affordable housing around a golf course, but where are the classes for the golf course to teach these kids how to play golf? For free, because it's an expensive sport. I know, because my daughter's father plays, and he owns quite a few clubs, and I know how much a ticket is, so it's quite expensive, but where is that money going back into the community? Because those kids are growing up into adults, and their adults are, their parents are, they're hearing all of this, and who are they looking out for? Not the children.
Thank you, ma'am. In the back, red shirt. Again, please state your name and spell your last name.
My name's Terry Crosby, C-R-O-S-B-Y. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Mossy Head and seen a lot of change over those 30 years that's come to our community, and a lot of it has been for good. The Benesi development, for one, it is pleasing to the eye when you enter into Mossy Head. The truck stop, the industrial area there, it was built in time. There was a lot of planning that went into that, and I commend the board for getting that done right. It's a nice place. As far as the projected development there on the county property, do we really want affordable housing? Not to discriminate against people, but sitting in between a beautiful development as the golf course, a school, and a park? There are plenty of low-income housing already in Mossy Head, and being a resident there, I know what all that brings. I live one mile back behind the Dollar Store. I frequent that Dollar Store that you speak of, it's a nice grocery store on a daily basis, and I would ask if you would just go sit in the parking lot for about an hour in the afternoons, and you could see where my concerns would be on the type of people that would probably qualify for the affordable housing built on that piece of property there. I agree with Mr. Richardson, the infrastructure. We have no infrastructure in Mossy Head. Like I said, I live within a mile directly behind the Dollar Store. I cannot get cable TV, have not ever been able to get cable TV. I'm still on satellite TV. I commute, I've worked on Eglin for 30-plus years. I commute down 285 every day, twice, sometimes four times a day. I challenge you to drive it at 5:00 in the afternoon and 6:00 in the morning. It's getting downright dangerous now. So when you speak of the hypersonic testing coming to Eglin Air Force, Horbert Duke Field area, how much more traffic is that gonna bring? What have we done for our infrastructure already? Nothing. We see what happened in Creshe, Florida, when the Seventh Special, all the Seventh Special Forces come to our area. We were supposed to, Mossy Head was supposed to get a big influx of all those, also, they never came. They all went to Creshe. Now what's wrong with Creshe? Go to Creshe at 4:00 in the afternoon. You'll come to a roadblock at Duke Field at 4:00 in the afternoon, and it'll be bumper to bumper all the way through. And I just don't want to see that happen to Mossy Head. I would love to see the infrastructure in our community built up before we try to bring more housing to the area. There's plenty of land around besides that one parcel right there. I think that parcel could be utilized for better things. Thank you.
Bill? Ma'am, you'll be next.
Bill Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. I don't know if this is the best place to have affordable housing, but I do know it's desperately needed in this county. Maybe it shouldn't be to bring back a proposal for affordable housing, but to assess, I'm not familiar with this HOS study you referenced, but maybe staff should look at that and come back and look at other properties that we have in the area. I remember, what, six years ago, Larry pulled me aside and thanked me for bringing loves to the table, and I remember telling him, "Look out, you're gonna open the floodgates when they move in here," and that's happened. So I won't discount selling county property if it's for the right reason. Again, this may not be the place for it. The Institute for Senior Professionals, as you all know, has performed a lot of studies, and one of the things that we saw constantly was the need for affordable housing. So maybe rather than bring back a proposal, it should be to evaluate the HOS study and look at other areas of information to what we need, where we need it, and when we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ma'am, you're next. Again, please say your name and spell your last name.
My name is Donna Crosby, C-R-O-S-B-Y. I've also been a resident of Mossy Head for 33 years. We have the golf course, we have the school, and we have the park. To me, a low-income housing or affordable housing is not to be put between a golf course and an elementary school. And another thing that needs to be looked at is traffic. If you drive 285 or Highway 90 any day, it is horrible. I know Love Truck Stop brought in all this money, but my gosh, the traffic is horrible. You get on 285 and 90 at 5:30 in the morning like me, and it's like NASCAR. It is horrible and it is dangerous, and something should be done with that first before more housing or more people are brought into that area. That's my opinion, but it's dangerous, and in the afternoons, it's just as dangerous, because now you have people coming off of the Destin passway, and it's just worse. The traffic is horrible. I'm all for the development, but low-income housing brings low-income people, and I don't want to sound snotty or snooty, but if you go through Mossy Head, like that young man said, you walk through the woods. There's crackheads, meth all over the place. That should be addressed before you bring in any kind of low-income housing, to clean that up and to clean our area up so we can be more like Destin. Destin gets all the money. Mossy Head, we get nothing. We get basically, if you want to say it, the trash. All the money goes to that end of the county, not this end of the county. Bring something that we can be proud of in Mossy Head. Thank you.
Any Commissioners have any comments, sir?
I don't know, there's one sore leg running in my head right now. Maybe, Ms. Nipper, if you tried one more time, so you can say you did.
Maybe if you tried one more time to have maybe a public hearing out in Mossy Head and invite everybody. That way, everybody, you know, and we're not gonna go knock on everybody's door or send you a notice, but that's what our website is for, and that's what, you know, the newspaper and all is for, is to let people know. You have to make sure that you're informed, but, you know, try to have one more meeting, and then, and maybe we do need to look at, you know, and you say the HOS study. I haven't read it, so maybe we need to have a workshop sometime and talk about our need and where the greatest need is and where, how we can, you know, attack that need.
And Ms. Graham, I know that you had spoken with Billy Williams regarding that property out there. Billy, raise your hand.
He's all the way in.
Yeah, Billy.
Yeah.
I know you all have spoken, and one of the concerns, Billy, stand up. Did you speak with?
He is standing up.
He is standing up.
Get up on the chair, Billy.
Come on.
No, you didn't speak with the...
Billy, you're definitely on for three minutes.
And I very much respect the property, but the target market was completely different, and that's what we talked about, the target market out there at Blackstone.
Yes, my conversation had been with Mr. Benesi and some of his staff related to the try-up projects and where they were going. Obviously, at that time, he was a board member and concerned that he would have a conflict. You know, and so the water and infrastructure that we talked about going through, that's been the extent of my conversations with him. As far as working on that, he wanted to make sure he had a separation as a board member, but he certainly saw the opportunities that the future was gonna hold for us out there.
Yeah, and the workforce housing that the HOS study will show regarding about an $800 a month rent was the target market that we were talking about.
Correct.
Right. So if anyone needs the HOS study, I'd be more than happy, Susan will send it out to you. It was done by our EDA, and more than happy to do another town hall meeting. Any other suggestions?
Ms. Stewart?
I do. I think we're all about economic development. We know for good economic development, you have to have good housing, you have to have infrastructure, you have to have good schools. We have wonderful schools. We need broadband, we're working on that. You know, I think we're all frustrated because we're feeling the growing pains, and so we're trying to find a solution, and I almost think we're trying to pinpoint a solution to one area. I would like to see, I've had many conversations with Tom Baker, and I would like to see a committee formed with five people, and whomever, you know, each one of us, find a person that really has a passion for housing, and let them, that committee look at the HOS study, let them look at any other studies, let them make recommendations, meet, make recommendations of where are good places for housing. You know, right now, all of our industrial parks are filling up. A distribution center is thinking about coming in Mossy Head. If we bring people in, they have to have places to live. There's no housing. There's hardly any housing in this area. So I think, you know, my suggestion would be to find a solution through a committee that can study all these things and bring back recommendations to us. You know, I think the question here is, do we want to use government, do we want to use taxpayers' property? You know, this committee might say, "There's property here, here." They could aggressively go out and try to find developers, people to come in and make their home Walton County. So that would be my recommendation, is to consider a committee, just a housing committee, maybe chaired by Tom Baker. Commissioner Nipper does have passion for housing, and I'm glad she does. We all have different areas that we, you know, seem to have passion for. Her heart's in the right place, maybe not, you know, sometimes we get ahead of what, you know, we're just grasping at trying to find things that work. So I would like to see more comprehensive attack on this, my ideas.
Well, I'm not opposed to that, but, and I think we all know we need workforce housing, and I appreciate Ms. Nipper's passion for it. She and I have talked about it quite a bit. My concern is that may not be the right place. I'm also concerned with what's the county, what is the county going to be involved, not involved? Are we gonna have to put the, any property that we're interested in getting rid of up for bid? There's just a lot of things that we need answered before we move forward. I definitely think it would benefit you and the citizens of Mossy Head to have another public meeting, and for you people from Mossy Head, eight or 10 people does not represent a public meeting. So, you know, the pro and the con people both need to show up so we can get a good As far as setting up a committee, we can look at that, and...
I think, no, can we just have a generic rendition and some type of understanding so that when I speak with Mr. Richardson or Mr. Stewart, we have some idea of this is good, this is not good? Like, right now, everything is so up in the air. All we're trying, I was just trying to get some type of an idea, and I love it. I love all the questions. They absolutely need to be answered, but we need some type of rendition, just some, I don't know, but I need something to work off where they can tell me, yes, this is a good idea, no, this isn't, this is not what we want, those kind of things. And I can also work with staff regarding the HOS study, the costs, what's expected. But I will tell you, we have a lot of people very interested right now in building housing that is of the workforce level, that are very interested.
And?
I just, I don't know, Larry, you can talk.
I agree with you. There's a need, and there's, but, you know, where there's a need in a market, believe me, they will be built. Also, I wanted to ask you if what Commissioner Nipper's talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, is just a general, can you work on something, or does it have to be specific before your office works on it? She's looking for a general idea of what we're looking at. Can you work with her on that?
I can certainly work with her. I'm Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. As you're aware, we are advising the housing element, component of the comprehensive plan right now, and that will be coming to this board probably in about 30 days for your consideration. We can certainly take the most recent HOS study for housing and take a look at that. As I've mentioned in the past, we have a requirement through our local housing assistance plan, that's a portion of our SHIP program, where we're required to identify surplus publicly-owned property annually and make that list available to the public as potential locations for affordable housing. Typically, this is a list of single-family lots that we've acquired one way or another, but we can certainly provide that. We're most happy to work with Commissioner to try to formalize some more formal approach as to how we deliver affordable housing. I would remind the Commission that this Commission has appointed an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that is presently active and managing the SHIP program. That might be a good place to get some recommendations.
I agree.
I wasn't aware of that, so that's a great idea.
Is that good for you, Commissioner?
I agree, and I also want to say that, matter of fact, Mr. Carpenter and I are gonna meet after this meeting to help promote and clean up, I guess I'll just kindly say, District 3 or the Mossy Head area. I understand the concerns, but I do see that this is where growth is going, and I'm just trying to get ahead of it, and I really do appreciate your input. Bonnie had some awesome questions. Donnie, I do appreciate it. We'll have enough of the meeting. I did not, I had no intent of jumping the gun. I just wanted some idea so that we had something to work with. I just wanted some idea so that we had something to work with. So thank you very much for your input.
Okay, all right.
DeeDee, Larry, can you see any, anything else to add? This is kind of.
Well, I'll just, maybe full disclosure. I live in Mossy Head. I've lived in a trailer. I love to shop at the Dollar General. I've enjoyed Blackstone. We got a great park. We got a great school. Love what we have going on in industrial park. It's nice to have a McDonald's close by. So I agree with my fellow residents that we won't see good things come to Mossy Head. Is there a place to accommodate the things we're talking about? I think we all agree that there probably is, done right, done appropriately, done at the right place at the right time.
Yeah, and there's already, and one of the reasons water and sewer was already available.
Sure, sure.
Because it's still such a remote area that the growth is coming. So DeeDee, any comment, anything to add?
I agree. I think the purpose for today was just simply to get direction to allow staff to work on a proposal or a mechanism or some sort of plan or idea to bring back to this board for consideration. It was just an idea to allow staff to move forward.
Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Just to end on a positive note for Mossy Head, I've been working with a group of people to get a roof for the Mossy Head Community Center. And it looks like, I don't want to jump ahead, but it looks like that St. Joe is going to help us with that. So, you know, we want to, we want to make Mossy Head as friendly as we can with, you know, we want the community to have a good place to go and visit and be a community. So we're working on that. So thank you. Thank you for coming, too.
The only thing I have is all of y'all out there, pray for Commissioner Chapman's speedy recovery so he'll be back at the end of the week for the quasi-judicial hearing in South End. That would help me tremendously.
Well, you did a great job for your first time. You didn't mess up nearly as many times as I did.
All right, we have citizens' requests. Howard Rinker?
I don't see him either.
Okay, so we will, other public, public comment? Planning and development?
Let's look at Howard's issue just for a moment. His request to approve the Defeniac Police Club and Aqua Clubs to hold their annual Memorial Day celebration on the courthouse lawn. They do that every year. I would suggest, unless you have some reason not to, you know, let's, for you to move that forward and approve it. And then if they want to use it, they're welcome to. Then Howard won't have to. Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Second.